Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the informational meeting of Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. It is Election Day. Make sure to get out and vote. I call this meeting to order. Before we start, I do want to note that we have a number of counselors on the phone. Maybe we'll just go through each and make sure that they're there. Counselor Kylie, are you on?
Here.
Counselor Erickson?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
And Brecky?
Here.
Thank you very much. That confirms we have everybody here today. The first item on the agenda is counselor remarks. This used to be called open discussion. We've just renamed it to be a little bit more accurate. Is there any counselor remarks today? Anyone on the phone? If not, we will move on to presentations. Our first presentation is an update on downtown development that is going to be presented by Director Jeff Ekoff and Dustin Powers. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, and thank you. Jeff Ekoff, Planning and Development Services. So I'm kind of the warm-up act for Dustin. He'll have the full show for you, but we want to talk today about downtown development and provide some perspective on that. And when you think of downtown, there's several things to think of. Of course, you think of economic development and the amount of tourism dollars and entertainment dollar, tax dollars that happen down there. It's quality of life issue, certainly. We spend a lot of time downtown and a lot of entertainment venues, arts, that outlet. But it's also a workforce development issue. If any of you have kids my age or any millennials, ask them sometime, especially if they've moved away, what do you like about Sioux Falls when you come back? What about Sioux Falls? Could you see yourself living here? And the answer will often be, they'll talk about downtown. They'll talk about the activity, and they'll talk about the music, and they'll talk about the arts, and the restaurants, and the coffee shops, and the bars. And so it is a workforce development tool for us. And as we know, we certainly need, that is an ongoing need with current announcements that we've had and with the active workforce that we have and the unemployment rate that we have. So think of it in those terms as well. Today, we're going to talk about, we're going to reflect a little bit on the history of downtown, kind of look at how we got to where we are today. And more importantly, we're going to look forward in where we're going tomorrow and things that we are hoping to use as tools to help leverage and continue the development and the success that we've had downtown. You know, I've lived in this area my entire life, and I, as a kid, came to Sioux Falls. And I remember when Sioux Falls was 60,000 people. And it's just kind of like watching your kids grow. You don't realize the growth and how fast and how vast the growth is until you step back and you take a look. And that's what we kind of want to do today for all of you, because I know you know it's grown. You know downtown has been successful, but sometimes you take a look back 20 years and you'd be surprised. And hopefully, that's what we'll talk about today. The growth that's happened has been intentional. It's not been by accident. There's been many mayors, many city council leaders, and some of you who have been part of that groundwork to lay the foundation, to lay out the chessboard, if you will, to get the pieces of the puzzle in line so we could have what we have today. We didn't always know exactly what it's going to be, but we knew we needed housing. We knew we needed more retail. We knew we needed people working downtown. We knew we needed people living downtown to make it successful downtown. So the things that the city has done, and the things that previous leaders have done, obviously, that are big: Falls Park, Phillips to the Falls, the River Greenway, and most recently, the rail yard redevelopment area. All substantial financial investments made by the city that in turn leverage public-private partnerships. Dustin's going to talk to a bit about the TIFs that have been in the downtown area. And from the investment of the public improvements of those TIFs, they've returned a private investment just on the development of a 10x, 10 times the return on the investment, not to mention the ongoing sales tax and services provided to our folks downtown. Whether it's what's gotten us here today or where we're going in the future, the key to downtown development is activation. It's a word you hear developers use. How do you activate that street? How do you activate these buildings against each other? How do you get activity going on? And it comes down to three things: density, walkability, and connectivity. And as we go forward, and we go forward, the tools we're going to be talking about today, those are the things we have to remember: density, walkability, and connectivity. We have the traditional tools that you're aware of, the CIP improvements, the streetscapes that are done, of course, TIF and bid, the discretionary form and the financial tools that we use to help developers and projects become reality downtown. But really, if you don't have the pieces and the infrastructure in place and the land and the ability for them to build, none of that really matters. And so one of the things Dustin will talk to you about is the surface lots, which is a recent tool, one tool of many, that we've put out on a couple of, two of our 11 surface parking lots. Surface parking lots in the downtown environment that's growing, and you're asking for density, and you're running out of space, obviously, is not the highest and best use. Again, we have 11 surface lots. We have six ramps. We chose two of them. We looked at them. We did, we looked at the net effect on the system. We looked at the proximity to other parking that could absorb that. And we looked at inquiries that we received from people. One of the things we also learned through the past is developments have come online. They bring parking with it because they increase the density. Therefore, they need parking for their tenants and their residents. And so we actually continue to gain those parking spots. Now, the availability is a little bit different than a public ramp, but we are still gaining those spots, and often it's done through a TIF. And so that parking has kind of evolved and changed as well. And the last thing I'll tell you before I turn you over to Dustin is that, as we look through these surface lots, or TIFs, or any projects that we look at going down in the future, we will continue to look at density, walkability, and connectivity. And the successful project that comes to us in any of these venues will have those elements to it, or we won't bring it forward if it doesn't make sense and doesn't increase that activation of downtown, which is what we really want to get. So with that, the boring stuff's all the way. Dustin's got a great slideshow that he's put together. I don't know, the kid's been digging through pictures like I, it's been amazing what I've had. Do you have a picture? Oh, yeah, I got a picture of that. It's pretty cool. So we'll let Dustin take it over, and then we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Dustin. Good afternoon, Council Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Jeff did a really good summary, so I'm going to hit on some of those same points, but I think we'll get through these fairly quickly here and be able to answer any questions that you have. So today, what we're really wanting to talk with you about is the transformation and evolution of our downtown, the planning efforts that have, we've used over the years, and I look forward to our next opportunities. There's been some significant development, if you look at the last decade, and I think it's important that we periodically reset, take a look at how the city's involved and plays a role in downtown development, how we got to today, and what we can do in the future to continue downtown growth. So just so everyone's on the same page of what we define as downtown. When we look at our downtown boundaries, they consist of Minnesota Avenue on the west side, 14th Street on the south side, Franklin and Weber Avenues on the east side, and then the northernmost boundary is Falls Park Drive that is just on the north side of the falls. So I moved to Sioux Falls 10 years ago, but before I moved, I decided I was going to visit downtown Sioux Falls to really see what downtown had to offer. And when I think about what downtown has to offer today versus what I saw 10 years ago, things have greatly prospered. And I think that's significant, because when you look at downtown, it's a great economic development amenity for our city. It's much of a determinant for someone looking to move to Sioux Falls as our healthcare, our school systems, our parks, our quality of life. And when you look at downtowns across the nation, if you have a healthy downtown, you have a healthy city. And if you have a lively downtown, that's an attraction for people who want to live, work, and visit our city. So take a quick moment and think about what you remember from Sioux Falls and downtown 5, 10, 20 years ago. What do you remember seeing? And over the next several slides, I'll present some images that will kind of revamp your memory if you're having a little trouble. So if we were to start on our East Bank, what would we have seen? We would see a very industrial East Bank. We would see buildings such as the zip feed mill here on the right-hand side of the photo. We would see the Shoneman's Lumber property, which bordered the east side of the river, south of 8th Street. And we would see a BNSF rail yard that was, until just a couple of years ago, very active in our downtown. If we were to look at our uptown area, what would we have seen 20 years ago? A very industrial area with no Phillips to the Falls. Phillips ended at 5th Street. Pitt Salvage Yard. An active operation of Sioux Steel. And rail lines that bisected our uptown where Phillips Avenue runs today. If we were to look at our river, what would we see? We wouldn't see any Greenway improvements. We would see a river lined with industrial developments that we just listed. We would see buildings focused away from the river instead of integrated with the river. And we would see a river ramp or a parking ramp that expanded the river from the east to the west bank. If we were to look at Phillips Avenue, we wouldn't see Sculpture Walk. We wouldn't see sidewalk dining. And there was still something active called the Loop 20 years ago. So if we were to look at downtown today, what would we see? On the next several slides, you'll see a map and a couple maps in the background, and I'll highlight each of them. This is the before and after of the East Bank. The imagery is from 2002 and 2020. The reason we used 2002 instead of 2000 was just as a result of 2000 being in black and white. So if we were to look at our East Bank today, we would see Sharapa Place that replaced the zip feed mill. We would see the lumber exchange building that replaced Shoneman's Lumber. And we would see the Hilton Garden Inn that replaced where the river ramp once set on the East Bank. If we were to look at our uptown area, so again, the map on the screen shows the comparison of uptown in 2002 and 2020. The images on the screen show the connection of Falls Park, Phillips Avenue to Falls Park. And above, you can see the transformation of extending Phillips Avenue, open developable land on the west side of Phillips, and parkland on the east side of Phillips. If we were to look at a few more images, these are a couple of images of before and afters of Phillips to the Falls from the north end looking south. And you can see the connectivity that was able to provide from Falls Park to the core of our downtown. But what has that resulted in, Phillips to the Falls? That developable land we talked about resulted in new developments such as Stockwell Offices, the Cascades Development, Phillips Avenue Lofts, and reinvestments in buildings and new developments such as Jones 421. If we were to look at the east side of Phillips Avenue, we would see our Levitt Shell and future development opportunity with the Sioux Steel redevelopment. If we were to look at our Big Sioux River and what it has to offer in 2020, we would have Phases 1 and 2 of the River Greenway with a future Phase 3 planned. And here, you can see how the integration of these Greenway improvements really integrate the developments into the river instead of creating a barrier. We would see developments like the Raven corporate headquarters that decided to reinvest into downtown instead of moving out of downtown. And we would see the Ark of Dreams, which pays tribute to the dreamers of the past, present, and inspiration for the dreamers of the future. And if we were to look at our downtown Phillips Avenue compared to 20 years ago, we would see a Phillips Avenue full of storefronts, sidewalk patios full of patrons, and 62 sculptures, part of the Sculpture Walk, a nationally renowned art exhibit. So times have changed, and downtown has grown, but do we remember how we got here? What decisions and investments had to be made? The risks that needed to be taken? Obviously, I'm not going to be able to address all of those within the next 10 or 15 minutes here, but we do want to highlight some of the ones that the city plays a heavy role in. So one of the first ones that's contributed to the success of downtown is our downtown planning efforts. Forward thinking and community engagement has occurred through a number of these planning efforts. First, looking at our downtown plans, which really present the global vision for the entire downtown district. We can go back to the 60s and 70s and look at the urban renewal plan that happened at that time, and that has played a major role in what actually you see in our downtown environment today. You can look at a 1987 plan that was drafted that created the vision for 2000. We had a 2002 plan that was drafted that year that created the vision for 2015. And that one laid out some of the projects we already talked about with Phillips to the Falls, expansion of Sculpture Walk, and the removal of the river ramp. And currently, we have our 2025 downtown plan that was drafted six years ago. And it talks about the expansion of Falls Park West, future phases of the River Greenway, road diets, or other ways of thinking about traffic, a mixed-use parking ramp, as well as a rail yard redevelopment area. And then we have our specific plans for downtown: our River Greenway Master Plan, our Falls Park Master Plan, the Rail Yard Redevelopment Plan. We even have studies such as the Downtown Streetscape Assessment and Standards, which looks at the streetscape standards and how we design our streetscapes. How does that integrate with the pedestrian and the urban environment? So it looks at things like bumpouts, crosswalks, our street trees, our benches and our trash cans, all of the things that make a good pedestrian environment in our urban area. That's what that study looks at. So by setting out those visions within the plan, we are able to determine the investments that are needed to continue to grow our downtown. Obviously, we'd like to see private investment occur for many of these investments to make sense. However, many times, it's these investments that drive the success of downtown by creating an environment that makes sense for private investment. It's many times that the city is needing to take the lead to grow our downtown. So what are those investments that we're making in our downtown? Our downtown CIP, which focuses on our infrastructure, utilities, and maintenance of all of those items. A good example of that would be your 8th Street Bridge project this year. Our public parking system. The public parking system has been critical to the revitalization of our downtown. And we'll talk more about some of those and how that has evolved over time as well. Park improvements and River Greenway improvements. We've funded those through both the CIP as well as quality-of-life bonds in the past. Facade easements in our downtown. This was a program that we operated that revitalized the historic facades of many downtown buildings. Our Business Improvement District. This is actually an investment of the property owners and businesses downtown that pay towards an assessment that help market downtown, provide a clean and safe downtown, beautify downtown with the flowers and landscaping that you see, as well as promote downtown through events. And then our cultural investments, such as the Washington Pavilion, the Orpheum Theater, the State Theater, as well as Sculpture Walk. So this list doesn't include major investments, such as purchases of the rail yard redevelopment area, or purchases of the Phillips to the Falls area, but it shows that the city has invested a lot to get to where we are today. However, when we look at those investments over the years, they really have changed the skyline of our downtown. So public-private partnerships have also led to a significant transformation of our downtown. The city's ability to leverage dollars to support and make downtown development feasible has driven the success of downtown. These partnerships have taken many forms, and some of those are related to the investments we already talked about, those ones that we're able to vision and plan for. But in many cases, they're handled more on a case-by-case basis. And one of the biggest contributors to that is tax increment financing. So on the screen, you can see 10 TIFs that have happened within the 20 years related to downtown. There's greater risk when it comes to developing downtown, and typically, that's because of extraordinary costs, such as environmental remediation, soil conditions, fractured bedrock, operating within the tight urban environment of downtown, as well as infrastructure needs such as parking. So what we have tried to do in the past with tax increment financing is try to level the playing field for development to occur so that it's a little closer to the cost of developing other areas of our town. So when we look at those two TIFs, or those 10 TIFs, that happened within the last 20 years, those are ones that have already developed or are currently being planned, and that would be the TIF 22, the Sioux Steel one. Of those 10 TIF districts, approximately $45 million in project costs have been supported through those TIF districts. But that has resulted in over $400 million of private investment. If we were to look at the taxable values of those properties, they've increased over 10 times the original base values of those properties. Those investments continue to add to the tax base, to our downtown, and will for decades to come. So it's important to know that the decisions that are made at a city level to support projects in our downtown have a lasting impact, and they'll continue to drive the economic engine of our downtown. So I was trying to figure out how to talk about why downtown development matters. And I was going through some information that I had, and I was able to come across this. And this is actually a mission statement from the Downtown Development Committee. So the Downtown Development Committee has existed for years, and it's a committee made up of advocates and business owners and property owners downtown that get together and just vision for downtown Sioux Falls. And it's a group that went away for a little while, but has actually been reinvigorated and has started meeting again. But this is actually their mission statement from over a decade ago. Sioux Falls' downtown is a visible indicator of the city's economic and social health. It's a valuable asset in the effort to recruit, retain business and industry, sustain residential growth, and expand tourism. The Development Committee will work to ensure stable and growing Sioux Falls by monitoring developments, facilitating cohesive and sustainable growth, evaluating needs, and proposing actions in the downtown area that further the physical, economic, and social development of all of Sioux Falls. So though this was the mission of the Sioux Falls, or the Downtown Development Committee of a decade ago, I think it's important that we call it out, because it's not really the mission of them. It's the mission of all of us. And what can we do to continue to support our downtown, which in turn will support everything in our city: the physical, the economic, and the social aspects of our city? So one way in which we have future opportunities at a city is we continue to support and look at ways in which we can provide opportunities to support downtown development. We have already spoke about what we have done through the visioning and planning, our investments, and our partnerships with private development, but we also have future opportunities to grow and maximize value in our downtown as a property owner. The city, its staff, the elected officials have all played a role in this over the years. We've made land available in our downtown area that has resulted in projects like the Cascades, the Phillips Avenue Lofts, the Stockwell Offices, and rail yard flats. So one of the first areas I want to talk about as a future opportunity is our rail yard redevelopment area. And this area has the ability to leverage some of the largest investments in our downtown. We have already seen development start with rail yard flats that encompasses about two acres of the rail yard area. We've also seen an initial vision for Sharapa 2 that's looking at additional two acres of land, which will then leverage several acres of private land that's associated with the Sharapa property to create a larger vision or a master vision for the entire area. But six acres still remain as development opportunities within our rail yard. When we set out the rail yard for redevelopment a few years ago, we set out some goals: creating a vital and diverse mixed-use urban district with density and intensity that would sustain long-term value. How can we leverage our rail yard as a property and encourage increased density of not just our rail yard, but the neighboring properties? How do we provide strong pedestrian connections throughout the rail yard area? If you look at the rail yard area and actually our whole East Bank area, it's not built on a grid system like the rest of downtown. There's not as much connectivity, and that's very important to really the success of what this development will look like in the future. As Jeff mentioned, we've also put out a couple of our surface parking lots as opportunity. 400 South 1st Avenue is the first one that we put out. It's located at 12th Street and 1st Avenue in our downtown, just south of the Ace Hardware. And this site provides a great opportunity for connection to Phillips Avenue with a direct connection with the 12th Street Plaza. When you think of 12th Street, over the last couple of years, we've had Washington Square, Josiah's, Blarney's, and Fernson all really revived that whole south side of downtown and 12th Street. And this site provides a direct connection through the pedestrian plaza there. So as stated earlier, parking has been an essential to the revitalization of downtown. Parking can play a major part, and sometimes that means expanding our existing parking by building structured parking to support a dense downtown. And other times, that could mean consolidating our parking to make way for higher and better uses of our downtown property, which in turn will support not only our public parking system, our downtown, and our city. There are always constant adjustments to the parking system. If we look back years prior, when revitalization of historic buildings were occurring in our downtown, the public parking system was utilized because those buildings weren't built for parking. They've been there for years. They needed parking to be able to increase the density, and that's how we utilized our parking system years ago. As Jeff mentioned, downtown developers today, if they're going to construct new development, they have to bring parking to the table on their own sites. And the reason for that is their sites aren't marketable. They're trying to attract tenants, whether that be residential, office tenants, or retail tenants. They want parking. And so the new developers, new developments are required to really bring their own parking to make it feasible for them to have a successful development. The second parking lot that we made available was 301 North Main, which is the lot just north of the library. And this provides a little bit larger site with a little over an acre of land. For the redevelopment of both of these parking lots, we did set out some goals. It's a little hard to read on the exhibits that we have out there for the public to see, but what we set out was to create a mixed-use development that encourages density, leverages the city property to increase density, not just, again, of our sites, but our neighboring sites, promotes connectivity and walkability, and promotes the goals and objectives of the 2025 downtown plan. As Jeff had mentioned earlier, he'd mentioned three words: density, connectivity, and walkability. And that's what we have in both our surface parking lots as well as our rail yard redevelopment when we were looking at these projects coming forward. So again, when we looked at both of the sites, we wanted to make sure they could accommodate development, but we also wanted to make sure the current parking tenants are able to be absorbed into our existing parking system. And that's how these sites were identified. There's neighboring public parking facilities that the current tenants would be able to be absorbed in. And by making these available, we will see a higher and better use for these properties that will increase property and sales taxes, increase the density, and promote a more walkable downtown. By creating development versus leaving them as surface parking lots, we eliminate the islands of openness in downtown that prevent walkability. And what I'm talking about is, is if you were to walk north along Phillips, and let's say you're going to start at 10th Street, and you're going to, you've already walked through the core of our downtown along Phillips, and you're getting to 10th, and you get to 9th, you start to see surface lots and large open lots that, as a visitor, you wouldn't know if you walked two more blocks, you would be uptown and that you would be in another activity center of our downtown. Or if you turned right on the 8th Street Bridge, that you would be in another activity center of the East Bank. So again, promoting that connectivity and walkability as well as density is very important. So lastly, our future opportunities don't only ally with city-owned property. They also can be with private property. And we can continue to support private development through our planning and visioning, our strategic investment, and our future partnerships. The City Council and the city plays an important part in downtown development. As a city, we've been able to leverage our funds and our assets to drive downtown development, to create that dense and walkable downtown that we all desire. Downtown is a large chessboard, and the moves we make today will open up moves we can make tomorrow. We have had tremendous success as a city in adapting in the last 20 years to support downtown development. And as long as we continue to adapt, we'll be able to support another 20 years' worth of development. So with that, hopefully, you've stuck along with us as we've kind of gone through the history of the last 20 years, and a very quick presentation. But I want to open it up for any questions. Jeff and I are here to answer anything. Thank you. Great presentation. Questions? Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Counselor Naitzer. I have a question about, as you know, I'm probably going to talk about the surface parking lots. How do we overcome the fact that these parking lots are not surplus? And I believe we have to declare things surplus in order to sell them.
So that is the decision, as I talked about during the presentation. One of the decisions that the council will have to make is to make those properties surplus and to approve the development and purchase agreement of those as we bring them forward.
So they're currently not surplus. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, usually, we don't surplus our property until we have a development proposal in front of us that we're willing to bring to the City Council for consideration.
Saying you overcome that very, very large hurdle that these properties are not surplus, how do you justify taking parking out of the system when we have yet to hit the numbers that the walker- that the Walker study said we needed? And the Walker study is five years old now, and that justified building the $22 million ramp? How do you justify taking parking out when we're not yet to our goal?
Well, I think, again, the study was written years ago, and it, and it really provided the guidelines for us to continue to succeed. But if we look at that parking study and the planning efforts that we've had, in 2014, we were establishing a vision in our 2025 plan that talked about redevelopment of our surface parking lots. That's always been considered as part of that effort of how we evaluate our parking system. Things change. I mean, we, we voted on the parking ramp three years ago, and though it was just completed, the, the idea of being able to increase density and maximize the value of our surface parking lots is a much greater prospect for our downtown than continuing to use surface parking lots as just surface parking lots.
Yet we don't have any hard data. I understand that is the opinion of the administration, but yet we don't have any hard data to support that, that our parking is being adequately identified. I would suggest, from my viewpoint, that until we hit the numbers that the Walker study says we need to have in our development, that we not move forward with any sale of any current parking. That would be my suggestion at this point. I know there's going to be a lot of discussion on that if and when those parking lots are ever declared or tried to declare surplus.
I think the, you know, the, when we, again, when we looked at these sites, we're able to absorb these parking customers into our existing system. So we have room in our existing system to be able to accommodate these future developments. And I know there's a number out there by Walker in the study, but again, we've evaluated the parking system and made sure that we're not, we're not creating an issue within our system. And we know that the new developments that occur are going to create their own parking to meet their own needs on site. So that's what we'll be looking for when those proposals come forward as well, is that they need to be able to accommodate their own parking needs on site while our parking system is still able to accommodate the needs of the parking, current parking customers that we have today.
I appreciate it. I think you've done a very fine presentation. I appreciate the downtown development and what you guys have done. I will say, my history goes back to 40 years with downtown. Pitts was a great place to bring your scrap lumber, and you could drive through puddles of oil when you went there. So I'm very glad that that's been redeveloped. We've also had some starts and stops downtown with the Downtown Plaza, which was a great idea when it was put in. Action practicality, it was not a great idea. So I appreciate your presentation. You did a very good job. Thank you.
Others with questions? Any on the phone?
I do.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. I'm sorry, there's a little bit of a delay on my end, so I apologize as we work through being on the phone here. So my questions are in regards to the surface lots too, and Counselor Sale, thanks for bringing that up. I sat on the RFP for the parking ramp, along with it changing three times, RFP, RFQ, kind of going through that process. And one of the things that we constantly hung our hat on is the Walker study. Where is the highest, where's the best place to put that parking ramp? And I know I'm focusing on that, but in the Walker study, it did say that, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have it in front of me, is that we would be out of parking with even that parking structure there in X amount of years. And so my, my question, I, you know, I don't see it as the highest and best use for those surface lots, but I also, I need data to show where those parking spots are being absorbed because they're clearly in the parking system already. And so we're losing, if you could tell me, Dustin, how many spots we will lose with those two lots?
Yeah, approximately, I want to say there's about 100 in the Main Avenue lot and about 40 to 50 in the First Avenue lot. So the Main Avenue lot is going to be, the Main Avenue lot's going to be absorbed into the 8th and Dakota ramp. So again, when we built and opened our new ramp, we resorted where people park. So there was a lot of DocuTap employees that parked in the 8th and Dakota ramp. Those have been relocated to the Block 11 ramp at 10th and Main. In the Block 11 ramp were First National Bank employees that are now relocated into our new parking facility. So as we look at structures when we build them, we do look at where is the highest density of need and why we need to build a parking ramp there. And that was why the site where we built the ramp was identified, even though there was a ramp right across the street. But it did filter and relocate the density and the need of our parking and where it's needed. So we are removing 100 spaces at the Main Avenue lot if it gets redeveloped, but they'll be able to be absorbed now into the 8th and Dakota ramp due to those relocations. And then with the main, or the First Avenue ramp, or lot, excuse me, there's a, there's a couple of options there. We have the, the, our lot to the south, which is referred to the Shrine Lot, that's just half a block to the south. Or we can relocate those to the First Avenue ramp, just a block to the north. So there is opportunity to relocate those as well, so.
So is there any desire then to have another Walker study done since that one is near outdated?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't have an answer to whether we need another Walker study or not, but I mean, as we continue to see development occur and things happen in our downtown, our parking system is always something that we're looking at and monitoring and how that can be utilized in the future.
Okay, that's something, generally, I'm not the first one to say we need more studies, we need more studies, but we all know how controversial parking has been in the downtown area from many different angles. And so that's something that could be, I mean, really, as we went through the RFP, we hung our hat on that study, and all, we, all of us, every single person in the administration as well as the council, had kept saying, hey, Walker study says this, Walker study says that. And so with, with us keep referring back to that study and then now saying, hey, we figured it out on our own, eh, it makes me a little uneasy with some of that. My other question for you, Dustin, is, is what direction is given for these lots? I will hearken back to the parking ramp again. When we talked about development with that, there were a lot of things that could not go in there. You couldn't have a massage parlor, you couldn't have a, a this, that, whatever, you couldn't have, there was a lot of different things that it could not be. With these two surface lots, has there been any direction as far as what they can or cannot be, or is it just anything is fair game?
Yeah, it, it's really, we'd be looking at our, our downtown PUD. So obviously, there's some of those adult uses and some of those things we already prohibit wouldn't be allowed in our downtown area. But we haven't really went further than our current zoning ordinance with this, with this property, because we would be selling it outright. When we think about the, the mixed-use parking ramp and that property, the city was still going to maintain ownership of the property. And so that, that was probably some of the reason between, behind some of those more restrictive uses on that property. But again, we, we would be looking at our downtown PUDs to, at our current zoning ordinance to what the uses could be. But we are looking for a mix of uses and something that promotes that connectivity, walkability, and density for those sites.
So then with the Cascades, we did give them quite a bit of direction because I also sat on that. And we, we did provide quite a bit of direction for them, and we sold that property outright as well, as well as honoring a pit. And I fully supported that project, and it's, it's been remarkable addition to the downtown area. But it's just not uncommon for us to not give some sort of direction, even if we sell it outright. My other, I'll make a statement about the one on Main Avenue. That one makes me a little bit uneasy. I know I've talked to a few other counselors. That is kind of our government gateway, if you will. And so having that land there, should we ever want to expand, once it's gone, it's gone. I know, I don't want to speak for Counselor Kylie, but just talking with him a little bit about him being on the city center, RFP, and some of the conversations of expansion and growth for the downtown, should we need it? Like I said, once it's gone, it's gone. So then my final question is, is has there been any counselors on this selection process, if you will, or is it intended to include any counselors to sit on this process for the downtown area?
So with our rail yard redevelopment area as well as the surface parking lots, we've handled that through not a traditional RFP, but a negotiated sale process. And, and we did an informational before we released the rail yard area of how that process would work. So those, those properties are listed today, and individuals can bring their proposals into us at any time. We'll evaluate them based on the goals and, and really their request or what their offer is, to make sure that it's a reasonable request and a reasonable offer to bring forward to both the administration and City Council for consideration. So we don't necessarily have a selection committee. We, we want to make sure that we bring reasonable projects forward for council's consideration, and that's what we'll do moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And I just will point out too, and state the obvious, that obviously we still have quite a bit of railroad property left as well as some additional Phillips Avenue property. And so there is additional property. It's not that we are in a landlocked situation to where we have to sell surface parking lots at this moment because we have nothing else available. We do have other land available, and there is other opportunity should we need to, to focus our attention or energy on making sure that railroad redevelopment is completed in full before we move on to something else. So as you can see, I have some reservations just as we move forward with this. And so my hope is that we continue the conversation and something's not just served to us on a platter. Thank you.
Director.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Erickson, for those thoughts. And certainly understand where you're coming from on that. And you're right, I think the primary focus for a lot of you is on the rail yard. There's been a lot of investment in getting that land ready, and we certainly want to see that land go. The other side of it is that businesses go where they want to go. And you provide opportunities, you provide options, you provide choices, but they end up going where they want to go. And so there are, there are, there are projects that like the rail yard because of the larger lot, because of the proximity, but there's also an active rail line there. There are other projects that would rather be in other parts of town. This is about providing options. People have expressed interest in those lots, and we certainly talked to them, they certainly are aware of the rail yard lots and all the lots we have. But at the end of the day, the prospect does make that choice, just like they do in any real estate transaction. But I do appreciate your comment, and we certainly do want to focus on that and not lose sight of that, Counselor, so thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Kylie.
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to continue a little bit with what Counselor Erickson had stated. When this idea was originally presented to us by Director Ekho, I did express concern over the, the Main Avenue lot across the street from the city center and just north of our current library for the reason that Counselor Erickson expressed. While it's true that we can still go up another floor with the city center, I'm not, I, I'm not as concerned about immediate growth in the next five years or maybe even 10 years, but what type of growth will the city need in terms of city government 30, 40, 50 years from now? The type of growth that we needed when we constructed the, the city center. So, and that was presented to all of us as a governmental corridor, and so I would have some concern about that. And my, my question is, what role has the Public Parking Advisory Board played in this? Was this presented to them? And if so, what were the comments coming from the Public Parking Advisory Board?
We've been working directly with Matt Nelson, the parking manager, on this. So I, I believe he's made the, the Public Parking Advisory Board aware of these, obviously, but I, I'm not sure if I have a recollection of the comments that he's received to this time.
Wouldn't they have to have a meeting of the Public Parking Advisory Board?
Well, I believe the advisory board is a little bit different than, you know, some of the other commissions that come in front of the City Council in terms of how their recommendations are brought forward. But I, we can definitely review that with Matt and, and have a conversation with him.
Yes, if you could do that and then get back to the council, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Others on the phone? Hearing none. I, I'll just throw out maybe a little bit of a different perspective, and I, and I do respect the comments and the concerns that others have, but some may know that this has kind of turned into a bit of a passion of mine. And a couple of thoughts I would throw out for people to think about. First of all, it was stated that there's really three goals, density, walkability, and connectivity downtown. And I, I would submit that a surface parking lot fails all three of those. Surface parking lots are not a good use downtown. And so to the extent that we can try to get rid of them, that would be a good thing. I don't have the parking study in front of me either. Couple of things that I think are worthwhile to throw out as context, I do remember that one of the things that I talked about, whatever it said, it need, we needed 1,000 or 2,000 spots by a certain year. It, part of it was, it, it also included and assumed private development. It didn't, it, it was not, it didn't assume that, that the public sector would build all of the parking. It, it assumed development. I'd have to go back to the study. I don't remember, you know, when they projected how many spots they would, we would need. I, I suspect they probably had in mind they were projecting some amount of development, that it wouldn't be stagnant, and that would drive development, or drive demand, I should say. So just want to throw those out there. There's, there's those different considerations, and, you know, I, it's one of those things, you're not going to get there, you know, you know, when it was challenged, you know, we're not building, we need 2,000 spots, we're not building enough, you know, when we built this ramp. This ramp was $20 million. I, I'm not sure if, if those that wanted 2,000 spots were willing to bond for 80 million or whatever it would have cost, even if we could have paid for it. So it, it, it's an incremental process, it's something that you continue to move along. And so I, I would just challenge that there's ways in which we can get the parking we need. And as you said, properties aren't marketable if they don't have parking. They're going to bring parking. So some of the, we may see a project where they bring something forward and it, it's net zero, for example. Maybe they replace all of the spots, we don't know. So I think we just need to be open-minded to that. But anyway, and, and I do remember fondly as a, as a kid going with my dad to Pitts salvage a lot, bringing truckloads of aluminum cans and stepping around battery acid and doing all that stuff in the 1980s. So yeah, things have changed, changed a lot over the years. It's really exciting, and thanks for the presentation. So appreciate it. Look forward to what you bring forward in the future. So with that, we'll move on. Item B, land use ordinance updates. It says Jason Bieber and Adam Roach. It looks like Adam is stepping up to the podium. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, council members. I too remember the pits, and as a young lad, they would give you 50 cent pieces if, if the amount equated up to that, so that was always special. And then that metallic smell that was always in the air there. Well, this is, it's time for the annual 2020 land use ordinance updates. So every year, we would like to take a look at the, what's going on with our ordinance book, how can we change it, what have we heard in the streets? So we want to review challenges and opportunities within our existing ordinance as a community evolves. So what does that mean with technology, trends, industry trends, things of that nature? So we started with stakeholder feedback. We reached out to the building community, we met with the Home Builders Association, we reached out to the Land Use Committee, spoke to a couple of you guys. We really honed in on our internal staff, our inspectors, our, our folks that are out in the field, and what are they seeing, what are some of the challenges that, that they have, and how can we assist with their efforts, and then looking at best practices across the country. So some general housekeeping items. These are just nominal things that need to be changed within our code that are essentially outdated or we have moved on. So the first one is license issued. This would allow signed contractors to be issued every two years like every other trade that we license with the city of Sioux Falls. So essentially, a little uniformity. It didn't really make a whole lot of sense why we're issuing licenses to signed contractors every year and then every other contractor every two years. The next one is the application for permit. This removes a required placement of a permit sticker for signage. There was a little sticker that you would get when you got a signed permit. And the expectation is that you would put that sticker on that sign, and then someday, somebody would come inspect it, and we'd be able to see that little sticker on that sign. With technology, we all have access to that information of what signs are permitted out in the field. We don't need these stickers anymore, so it's time to move on from that. The next is just a typo within the ordinance, essentially a form from DD 6 to DD 5 for the manufactured residential housing. The RE 6 pedestrian access regulations, this essentially takes the shape Sioux Falls 2035 comp plan to just generically call it the city's comprehensive plan, so every time we do update, update that, we don't have to change it. Next up is allowed and unauthorized sign types in each district. This item was published wrong. The wrong form was published in the ordinance, so this will completely clean that up. The next one is public notice. It removes business and reads 10 days in advance, and this mirrors state law, put the zoning board of adjustments specifically, so there isn't any confusion about whether it's the state's policy or the city's policy. Um, so there isn't any confusion about whether it's the state's policy or the city's policy or we are all, um, just hitting on the, on the same cylinders there. Uh, the next is the UT two bulk regulations. Um, this would clearly exempt water towers from fall down distances. Uh, they were roped into, uh, the utilities category, essentially the UT two. And we don't need the fall down distances with those. So those are kind of the housekeeping items that I just went over briefly. Uh, the next are, uh, more substantive ordinance changes that are visible or will be visible throughout the community. Right here you see a vinyl graphic sign. These are more popular, uh, throughout the community. They're not allowed, but they are aesthetically pleasing. Uh, they look better than banners that are waving on the front of buildings that are tied down with rubber, uh, rubber ties. Um, so we would like to allow this. Uh, they not only help for, uh, aesthetically pleasing, but for snow removal, you don't have the large signs and the pedestrian right of way within downtown. So it's another option to market properties or to advertise. Uh, the next one here is the 81, 82 and 83 forms. Uh, we had a request from, uh, one of our developers who was interested in putting, um, twin homes back to back, rather than side to side, put them back to back. They still have the, uh, same side yard, uh, rear yard. I'm sorry, not rear yard, but front yard setbacks. Um, it's just another option, uh, for the builders. And, uh, it seems to be more cost-effective as well because you're not putting a soundproofing wall all the way along a very long wall. Essentially, you could just put that along the back. Next up is the 84 bulk regulations. Uh, this eliminates the required buffer yard for duplexes on small lots within the core on those RT two zone properties. So anything less than, or two units, one to two units would not require, essentially two units would not require a buffer yard, but anything from three to eight units would require a 10-yard buffer yard. And the purpose for this is, uh, lots within the core are, are smaller. Uh, they're more challenging to develop. Um, and this would open up more options for accessible housing throughout our community. Uh, BCF one principal uses. Uh, this essentially, it clarifies or the design elements for BCF one properties adjacent to residential. Um, this keeps those aesthetics intact with all those different uses. One of the exceptions that we had, um, I believe by accident was that daycares were not allowed to or were not required to provide the brick as every other use within the BCF one was. Um, so we want to keep that uniform, keep it consistent, keep those office uses, um, adjacent to residential uses, uh, to look at a residential style or fashion. Uh, next is the landscape standards. This is one that we thought we would get a little resistance at the Home Builders Association, um, but we did not. Uh, so what we're looking to do is require a street tree for all residential properties within the city of Sioux Falls. So, uh, single-family homes, twin homes, they would be required, one street tree per 50 feet of frontage. And if you were to, uh, put a boulevard tree in, if it was permitted through our Parks Department, we would count that as your front yard tree requirement. And the reason for this is we lost so many trees during the ice storm, the Emerald Ash Bore. Um, who knows what's going to creep up on us next and destroy the trees? But, uh, we've lost a lot of our, our urban canopy and it's time to start thinking about that and bringing that back. Uh, this is a buffer yard component. Includes implementing buffer yard as a potential stipulation for conditional use permits. Um, with our conditional use permits, our most contentious items that we have are the transitions from residential to commercial. Um, and those buffer yards are very meaningful when, say, they're proposing a casino adjacent to residential. Um, we just want to clarify within the buffer yard requirements that that can be a stipulation adjacent to, uh, residential properties. Uh, then also, uh, another item that we found over the last year was an arterial right of way satisfies the entire buffer yard. Well, when we had a, um, commercial property go forward for a building permit, uh, we started looking at, uh, the site as a whole. We realized that we were not requiring the screening of the headlights in the parking lot to an adjacent single-family home across the street where the arterial street didn't really satisfy, uh, what we were looking for, for the, uh, the light pollution. Uh, next, intersection safety zone. Uh, this would change the intersection safety zone to the intersection vision clearance area. And this reduces impediments from 12 feet to eight feet in residential neighborhoods. So that the tree in the bottom right-hand corner, we had an inspector go out there and it was in violation of our clear vision area. Um, so the response of an inspector is to, well, go ahead and cut that tree up 12 feet. And you can imagine the response that we got, uh, from the resident. Um, and then the resident provided us with a document full of other trees that needed to be cut throughout the neighborhood as well. Um, so we, we looked at this, we had our inspectors do some drive-bys and, and things of that nature. And we think, uh, 12 feet to eight feet is appropriate for residential neighborhoods, but the 12 feet would still be a standard for, uh, the commercial districts and all the other districts throughout the community. And then also there's the driveway intersection safety zone and that would also change to the driveway vision clearance area, but the language would not change. It's just when you tell people about the intersection safety zone, they don't really get it. Um, it seems that the intersection vision clearance area may be a better terminology for that. So next is parking loading and stacking requirements. All were conducted on non-conforming parking lots constructed to 20, prior to 2014 require a permit. 2014, the rules changed. Um, and so there's been lots of discussion on what triggers a permit. Um, is it a seal coat? Is it restriping? Is it an overlay? Um, so essentially what we're doing now is if that parking lot was constructed before 2014, does it meet our current standard? If it does, you don't need a permit for your seal coating, restriping, overlay or other minor fixes. If it is non-conforming, that would trigger a permit so we can look for things like the front yard, uh, parking requirements, things of that nature. And we know that not all properties are able to meet the front yard requirement. Um, so we will certainly work with those property owners to, uh, bring their property up to our current community standard since 2014. So off-street parking requirements, uh, so this would change the, the language. Adding additional bedrooms to homes constructed on or before 83, 1983, do not require additional parking spaces for adding bedrooms. Ordinance indicates that if you add a bedroom over, so on the next line, a minimum of one parking space per dwelling unit, two spaces per each dwelling unit with three bedrooms or more. So if you were to trigger the three bedrooms and you only had one parking space, you could be denied a permit to put that bedroom in your basement. There's a lot of families out there who are not willing to just go sell their home to accommodate their third child where they can put in an egress window, um, and make things work. And we certainly understand that, uh, certainly with the accessible housing shortages. So this would allow them to put that extra bedroom in without providing the extra parking, but they would be allowed to widen their driveway up to 20 feet to accommodate two cars. Uh, continuation of off-street parking here. Um, we wanted to delineate between indoor and outdoor, uh, private recreation facilities. Uh, we had a, a snafu with, um, the outdoor volleyball carts where our parking calculation was based on the structure. And all we have for a structure at the outdoor volleyball courts is a concession stand. And so I believe the required parking for the outdoor volleyball courts was two spaces. Um, and that is certainly not adequate for a facility of that nature. And so we see a lot of spillover parking, uh, in this neighborhood. Future development will help alleviate some of those parking challenges. Uh, but we felt it was more appropriate to delineate between the outdoor and the indoor and provide more parking instead of based on just the structure of any type of outdoor rec facility. Uh, the next is one is sign exemptions. This would allow, uh, construction fence screening to have graphics on it. Um, it could be graphics of the contractors. It could be leasing information. It could be a schematic of the project. You see it all over the country. Uh, we, we think it's appropriate. Um, and it's, it's a great way to showcase and also market that project. Uh, so next steps for, uh, this project for the land use updates is review with the city attorney and then bring forward to our planning commission and then bring forward again to council for consideration. And with that, I'd like to open up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Adam. Questions from the council? Counselor Sale?
Thank you. Uh, about your, I think it's about your sixth page. It talks about, uh, there. Zero required rear yard would be allowed to accommodate twin homes abutting rear yard to rear yard. Could you, I, I'm just having a little bit of problem.
So that graphic does not illustrate, but the graphic is currently how it is. So the properties would be back to back. So instead of joining on the sidewall, how most twin homes do, they would join on the back. So you would still have your side, you would have a side yard and a front yard on those. You just wouldn't have that rear yard.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Others, including on the phone?
I know it's not as exciting as downtown development and the cool videos that we saw, but it's important.
Yeah, I probably do have a couple of things. So I, I assume that, um, the, the tree requirement, that would be, that would be during construction and, and it's not going to be something where you'd go back five years later to make sure the tree is still there. Because I mean, trees die.
Right, yeah.
It, it happens.
We wouldn't go back to all the single-family homes that were permitted and make sure that tree is still living.
Um, a, and this is somewhat related, but I, any, and, and I know some, some neighborhoods have done this. Some neighborhood, um, groups have asked for grants for this. But I think anything where we could try to encourage, maybe we would do some sort of coordinated effort where we would maybe reach out to a neighborhood and say, hey, we, you know, maybe we come through here, we do a project, we work together and we'll put a tree in everybody's yard or boulevard or whatever, who wants to sign up? And we'll somehow figure out how we can make it easier, you know? Because there are neighborhoods like mine where it's just desolate of trees. It's just not there.
I think that's a great idea. I think more emphasis on our urban cam, the canopy is important.
So just-
For a number of reasons.
Yeah, just something to think about. And it may or may not be financial. It may be something to do with, you know, helping them out or coordinating it or whatever. So, because that's been done in a few places and that's been very, very nice. The, um, the item where you are, I'm just looking for it. The, the parking standards, that is going to be a very welcome, when it comes to single-family homes with the addition of a bedroom and then also allowing a wider driveway, it will be a very welcome addition because there's a lot of older homes and, and they just, just don't have enough parking. And we run into this all the time as counselors with calls and, and then you have to enforce it when there's complaints and, you know, and sometimes people have a car that's halfway on a lawn because they have two cars and they only have one garage stall and there's nowhere to go. And so I think it's going to be a great, great thing to encourage, uh, it just, you know, people staying in their homes and being able to use them in a more realistic manner.
Absolutely.
So it'd be very good. Any other comments? Seeing none?
I would just like-
Yes, Counselor Kylie?
I would just like to say that I did find this presentation very exciting. It was so exciting, it just left me speechless. Thank you very much.
I think it's just because I was a warrior.
Yeah, it is.
Very good. Well, with that moment of levity, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to those coming forward. Next up is public comment. I'm only seeing city employees, so I'm assuming there's not going to be any. But if anybody wants to speak for up to five minutes on anything we've talked about today, please come forward. Seeing none? Get out there and vote if you haven't already. You have a couple more hours. Have a good day. Meeting adjourned.